So, uh, call this meeting to order. So if we could all please stand and, and hear the pledge.
I believe this to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Are there any items placed for the agenda? Any items placed for the agenda? Okay, hearing none, we'll move forward on our agenda. Do we have any public comments?
We do, uh, we have one online and five in person to start with the online. Joe Pelka, you should be able to unmute.
Good evening, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, thank you.
Yeah, good evening trustees, my name is Joe Pelka. I'm again speaking about the issue of the Rockman Library. I found it most interesting at one of your subcommittee meetings last week, where you plan to use the approximately over four hundred thousand dollars to buy the U. Uh, past library. And then to spend another sixty thousand dollars to adapt the door so it could be hybrid. Now, I applaud you wanting to have better access to that library for the residents there. But in your own documents, the facility survey, if you look at the numbers, you'll find that the number of people using the U Pass library is extremely small compared to how many of those that used the Rockman Library. So I ask you, what was your logic in closing a library that serves so many more people and taking that money, which would be about what the rent would be for two years, and spend it on another library that has a whole lot less clientele going to it? I don't quite follow the logic, so please help me out and explain it to me. Thank you.
And then, uh, I'll announce the first three at a time, so we can get ready, the first three for public comment. Uh, Eric Lundberg, Veronica Baker, and Jacob Ward, please, you can speak at this microphone. Eric Lundberg, Veronica Baker, Jacob Ward.
I'm Eric Lundberg, thirty-six-year resident and library lover. So first of all, now that the Rockman Library has been closed for a month and a half, I'm hoping to hear more about the plans to serve our area. In your last statement posted on the website, you said you've given thoughtful consideration of other ways to provide a service. So I hope we might hear more about them tonight to provide us with future service while we continue to serve our library. Also want to clarify something, as there seemed to be some confusion amongst the board at the last meeting. It's not a community center that we're seeking. We want our library back. So please don't think you can shift this problem onto the city. You've created a library void, and it's your issue to resolve. But mostly what I want to address here is a ridiculous statement made by a county commissioner at the November meeting. A situation was described in which a student wasn't able to take a class they wanted to take. And the solution that was suggested for that situation was to close the school. How absolutely ludicrous. There are several more reasonable solutions, such as going to another school for a class here when the school doesn't offer, as my niece is doing right now, or choicing into another school or a district that hasn't changed much. But closing a school has wide-ranging and long-lasting impacts on the entire community. And so does closing a library. So I had to address that statement from the November meeting because I'm not gonna let that kind of rhetoric go unchecked. Closing down our educational institutions such as libraries is not a path our community is okay with. And when statements are made like that from our supposed leaders, I fear we're doomed to repeat this crisis in the future. Where you decide to, to close a branch without engaging the public, the community shows up in droves to protest and profess their love for the library, it all falls under peers, and another community is repartied. But we're not gonna let that happen because we love our libraries and it's our money that you are stewarding. If the district truly has a financial issue, as you claim, the public has told you and will continue to tell you that we're not okay with library closures as a solution. So as well has time to start listening to us.
Hello. In nineteen eighty-six, the people of Northwest Colorado Springs voted on a bill levy so that, so that they may be recipients of a library for their community. Meetings were held and people were able to voice their opinions and their needs. The majority approved the bill levy and Rockman Library opened in nineteen eighty-nine. Since then, this library has been a community staple people have come to know and love. It's even been expanded during its tenure to accommodate the needs of a growing community. In this last year, Rockman Library tied for second busiest library in PPLD. I recently ran into a parent from our community who provided math tutoring services at Rockman Library. She too expressed surprise that our busy library had been closed. She remembered having to wake up as early as five or six AM to secure a spot for our only, but again, very busy study room. Tragically, one of her students who benefited from her services cannot access Library Twenty-One C or East Library and is now going without the much-needed academic support. This story is just one of many that we have in Northwest Springs now. And still, the question is asked, why did you close our library? How are we supposed to believe that money is the reason for closing when you discuss buying the U Pass library and barely hesitate before signing a multi-year lease for the Monument Library? If money is the issue, what were you hoping to gain when you returned more than one grant for the twenty-twenty-four fiscal year? When you turned down money and closed our library, which harmed our community, you appear disingenuous and further deteriorate trust in your service. We are a group of citizens deeply committed to our community and public services that enrich it. We want to safeguard these resources for not only our community, but also for others that are in danger of losing theirs, such as Ruth Holly Branch and the Cheyenne Mountain Branch. Furthermore, we support and encourage the growth of libraries in places that are underserved currently. We don't need to take away a thirty-five-year-old, well-used library many depend on to accomplish this task. As we move through the selection process to fill the upcoming vacancy on the board, we are all closely watching how this unfolds. With a robust group of fifty-one applicants, we know that there are many qualified candidates from which to choose. We want to ensure that a value-added criteria is used to secure quality applicants and they're being considered and interviewed. Additionally, these candidates should show creative problem-solving skills. They should work hard to listen to and work with communities. And most importantly, they should only close libraries when every other avenue has been thoroughly exhausted. Thank you.
Hey, uh, I'm Jacob Ward, president of the Workers Union at the Library District. Um, I'm here to say something positive. Uh, the pay rates that we got was substantial to make a difference, um, and allowing us as workers to thrive more. Um, it's been very helpful on a personal note. Um, I decided before I'm gonna whip the shrinks this past year due to the disloan pay. Now, I don't feel like I will have to make that decision again. So that has been hugely helpful and on behalf of the workers, um, thank you for making that decision. That's all of the offers, man. Thanks.
And our last two speakers are Pat Webb and Carla Powers.
I'm coming. Trustees. Community people that are here, thank everyone for their time. On November thirtieth, I was the last patron out of the Rockman Branch. This horrible event still hasn't sunk into me. How could you have done this? Let's try and let something, it doesn't. It's wrong. One thing that has, I want to write notes with no voodooism. Uh, one thing that, um, PPLD collects my property taxes. And believe me, I, I pay my fair amount. But yet, I get no vote. So therefore, PPLD is run with taxation without representation. And this is wrong. The PPLD documents need to be reviewed and in my opinion, changed so that we have an election for the trustees. That's the way it's done when you've got money involved in something. My other soapbox currently is, I understand you're thinking about closing, uh, two other libraries, I mean, maybe rumor, I don't know. But if you're gonna close another library, why don't you close Penrose? Penrose is your money draw. That's where it's going. For what? And people don't wanna go there anymore. It's not a nice place to go. Build a big fence around it, which you wanna do, seven feet tall. Build your fence. Leave Carnegie open by appointment for research. You have to leave the Carnegie open where you have to pay all that rent back to the beginning. But why are you letting Penrose drain you when you're looking at other closures and you closed Rockman, which I still don't see? How could you possibly have done that? Now, I also know that the state, I've been informed that the state says that your board must be appointed. Um, let's get that changed if we have to, um, to get us a, to vote for our trustees. Thank you.
I'm Carla Powers, and I'm the person who's trying to organize the Safe Harbor Library. And I just wanna look around. Some of you guys I've known from other parts of my life. And I just want you to understand, we are just really wanting to work with you guys. We want to work with you and see if we can figure out a better way to do this. It's a matter of priorities. We know that all of you understand that as well. It's a matter of priorities. So we're just sorry that somehow we managed to hit the bottom of the pile. I expect you didn't expect us to be so upset about this, but you've really taken out the heart of our community. I don't know what else to say. Um, I do not understand why you'd be thinking about purchasing the U Pass library that sounds like it's a crazy, like two, four hundred ninety thousand dollars, which sounds reasonable for that building. I know in twenty-twenty-one that the, the annual rent was less than ten thousand dollars. I don't know what it is now. But that means we take forty-nine years to recoup purchasing that building. So if there's other information, I don't have it. And I've looked, it's not transparent. It's hard for me to figure out why you guys are making these decisions. It does, it's hard. Um, the Monument Library, I love the Monument Library. I love those people up there. It's one of my favorite places to stop. That is such a great library. We have a great library in Rockman Library too. I do not understand why you chose them over us. You, we renewed their rent. You did not renew our rent. Why? I do not understand. And it's, it's not transparent. If, if you could explain that, I'd really like to know. We are waiting for, Dora, it is very nice of you to offer to have at least a bookmobile service up there. It's been a month and a half. So as soon as that could get going, we'd love to have it. I think that we've reached out a couple times. If you'd like to talk to me about like, where's the best place, I would love to work with you on that. Also a book drop to have up there. Um, and then the other thing I just wanna say for the applicant process, please give us one whose priorities are, are not to close libraries. Please, let's try to keep our libraries open. Let's have equal access throughout the whole area. Let's put them out east. Let's keep ours going. I think that if we work together on this, we can find a way to do everything together. So that's it.
Nobody else on? No one else? Okay, we'll go ahead and start with our report, internal affairs. Yeah, our report, internal affairs.
Uh, yeah, we met last week and as noted, we spoke on the potential of purchasing the U Pass, the, back in the fall. We gave the thumbs up to the administration to just do some more research on what that would be. And so they've gotten appraisal done, they have some more information. So they brought that to us, we passed it on to the full board, and so we'll hear that later this evening. Um, we also spoke on the RFP for results for the new ILS. Um, we'll be hearing more on that later this evening as well. Uh, but everything that I heard about the new ILS sounds stinking awesome. So really excited about having that opportunity uh, to move forward with that. And then we had Randy's mid-year budget update, so. That was, was internal affairs.
Thank you. Governance. Did you meet?
The governance did not meet.
Okay, um, public affairs, sorry.
We did not meet.
You did not meet. Uh, I see Councilwoman Henjum, do you have any remarks?
Uh, good evening, board. Uh, my name is Santi Henjum, and I am one of the liaisons from the City Council of Colorado Springs to this board, as you know. Um, my report actually is, uh, just wanted to let you know that I'm really looking forward to working with the other three liaisons to, uh, determine which of the fifty-one applicants, uh, since this September, a set of applicants, uh, uh, came in there, as you know, two sets of, uh, uh, applications that have come in. Um, I have made, uh, the selection that I would like to interview, I believe I shared that with, uh, with the board chair and with Julie Smythe, I'm a vague memory of making sure that you all got that. Um, and, uh, uh, so I have made a, a selection on my end. I'm looking forward to meeting with the other three liaisons to see if we can agree on, uh, uh, maybe a total of five to ten, and I'm not sure how we will work that process out, but once we do, um, we will, um, uh, do those interviews. We will, and that meeting, by the way, will be publicly noticed. Um, so we, that discussion that we will have, um, to determine when we're going to meet and which, um, uh, which candidates we're going to interview will be publicly noticed. Uh, we'll work with the county, with the library district, and with city council to make sure that's noticed, that, so that people can attend that meeting. Um, the interviews themselves, uh, we haven't worked this out yet, but I, I don't expect those to be, uh, publicly noticed. Those will be interviews with, uh, I believe the four liaisons and whoever we choose to interview. Um, at that point, once we have made those, uh, complete those interviews, our deliberation, um, we will then set another time to deliberate. Um, or I don't know exactly when we'll get that set, but we'll set a time to deliberate and we'll make sure that that is publicly noticed as well so that the public can hear those deliberations on the interviews that, that have took place. Um, uh, and Ms. Gonzalez, I, I imagine you're probably ready to, to, uh, celebrate your time and move on to other things. I'm sorry that we don't have that many, um, at this point in time. I would hope that we can get that done by the February meeting. Um, but I can't promise that. I've got, uh, three other liaisons to work with and now public education. Um, so hopefully, uh, we can get, get that moving quickly now that the county board of commissioners have, uh, sworn in, there are new members. Um, I did also send, and, uh, would appreciate when the, uh, Board of Governance Committee does meet again, um, have proposed a rubric. Um, I have not heard from my fellow liaisons, what they think of that rubric. Um, it looks at criteria for, um, both, uh, would suggest, uh, respectfully that, that this Board of Governance Committee take a look at using that, um, criteria for, uh, when you make your recommendations to the liaisons, uh, for who we might consider interviewing. As I've come to learn in this, uh, last go-around, uh, you, you definitely leave it up to, and it is the liaison's prerogative to decide which candidates we'll interview. Uh, but your, um, taking your, your review of those candidates is important because you are the board and you know, uh, excuse me, you know what areas you need to, um, uh, fill in in terms of skills and gaps and so forth. So, um, at your next, uh, Governance Committee meeting, would really appreciate if you all could take a look at that, um, at that rubric and give your input. Um, it certainly doesn't have to be final, would be very open to hearing your input on, on that rubric. Um, so I think that that is all I have to share for now, but, um, and very keen to get moving on that, uh, so that you can have a replacement for your president and you, I, I guess you're probably gonna have to make, um, you know, I guess you'll be talking about, um, leadership today, you're meeting, you may have to make that decision in court if someone needs, so. Um, but are there any questions you have for me about that process? Well, uh, stay tuned and, uh, we'll look forward to working with you on making sure that's notified. Uh, we will probably be looking, yes, I'm sorry.
Thank you. I know in past years, like last year, I worked, I just kinda sat in on those interviews. The president, is Ms. Gonzalez gonna be part of those, that interview process, or is that discussed?
I, that has not been discussed with liaisons. Um, I, I would be happy to hear your all's, uh, opinion and, and wishes on that. And I would say the four liaisons would need to make that decision together. Um, I think it makes sense to have, um, both the CEO and the, uh, and, and the board chair to be a part of those conversations. It makes sense to me, uh, but that will have to be a joint decision among, um, the four liaisons.
Thank you.
Yeah, absolutely. Any, any other questions that, that I can answer? Um, I would say we probably will look to you as to, uh, for a location about where we might go both the interviews and then also the deliberation portion, given that, um, we will be making sure that's noticed and the public can attend. Uh, we would want people to be able to watch that, um, on one of your Okay, I think that's all I have. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I hope your meeting doesn't go as late tonight as ours did last night. We finished it, it'll be, um, yeah, very long, I just, anyways.
Okay, any trustee comments? Anyone?
Uh, I do wanna make a few comments tonight. First of all, I wanna thank, uh, all the trustees for their support and, uh, uh, this past year as president, and I can honestly say thank you to the staff of PPLD for having me sit in this position uh, for the past five years being on the board of trustees. And I thank them, they've always been with open arms. Uh, uh, so I thank them as well, and I do believe that PPLD is in really good hands with our leadership. They, there's a strong, uh, leadership team that is very creative but drives everything on, all decision-making is based on data that is collected. So I appreciate that from a teacher's point of view. So I thank you for that. The other thing that I wanna bring up is, uh, and I can't remember what day it was, but we, um, January sixth, I believe. Uh, Tauna and I, and I think Denise, we met with John Weiss and Dave Williams and Aram, thank you very much for convening us together. Uh, and they would like, uh, uh, they were, they wanted to speak to us about which ways or how we're gonna move forward in possibly getting more dollars for the library. It is, was just a very, um, beginnings of a meeting. I don't know where it's going to take us, but stay tuned, as somebody else said earlier, on what are the possibilities? I do think that I would leave the board with the recommendation of sitting down and having, uh, some time, uh, and, uh, working on some strategies of setting priorities of what we need in the library. And, uh, uh, as we move forward, using our facilities master plan as our guide. Uh, and I know there's a lot that would need to get done, but we have concrete evidence now of the needs of PPLD. So all of you stay tuned. I, I am hopeful that many of you will continue being, uh, uh, supportive of PPLD. I don't see any reason why not. And I know someone spoke about the bookmobile. We're working on that scheduling, so just keep your eyes open on that. As soon as we get that moving forward, it will be communicated out to the area. So with that, I wanna say again, a great big thank you to everyone that has, uh, supported me in this endeavor. I appreciate it and I dearly love the library. Anyone else wanna say anything? We'll move on then. Friends, it's Friends of the Library here tonight.
Yes. Rita is online. Rita, you should be on.
Hi, Rita. Oh, yeah.
It worked, and then you rebooted. There you go.
Okay. Dora, thank you. It's been a pleasure working with you over these last few years. We're sorry to see you go. Um, for the friends, uh, we sent you the January report about, uh, our December, what we accomplished in December. And I'd just like to say that the friends have had a terrific fourth quarter because in our fall book sale in October, we broke records. And then as, uh, in, in November, it was quiet and normal. But in December, if you, I just wanna point out, it must be that people really wanted to buy some better books for Christmas presents or whatever, because usually our Amazon sale is about five hundred, seven hundred, but it was over two thousand in December. So, you know, everybody goes to, to websites now to, to, uh, buy books. So even though our bookstores didn't show an increase, our online, you know, stores, um, showed a, uh, an increase. And, and right now, as I mentioned, next Saturday is the Friends Annual Membership Meeting, where we have the opportunity to talk about the highlights of the year. Um, and our guest speaker, our keynote speaker for the meeting is Donna Guthrie, who is the Golden Quill winner for our literary awards that we, uh, had in, in June. So, uh, she's a delightful lady. She's, you know, writes lots of children's books. So even though this is a Friends member meeting, it is open to everybody, and so we invite anybody who would like to hear this, uh, wonderful recipient. So the part, uh, my part of the in quotes, business meeting is short so that we have lots of time for our keynote speaker. So that's about all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, what's next here? The foundation, I believe?
You're in, it's amazing, y'all. I am so excited to report. We did over a hundred and seventy thousand dollars in the last two months of the year, um, and that is just unbelievable. Um, we, our largest gift was, um, around two, two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Um, it did come in the form of a stock gift, but doesn't matter, they're all the same. It was awesome. Um, and then we saw a significant amount of gifts around that four, five thousand dollar. Uh, it's, I'm just blown away by the support that we've seen. Um, and just a brief update, I have my board meeting, foundation board meeting tomorrow. And I think we're gonna bring on six, if not seventy, board members, uh, so that's very exciting. Um, and finally, I just wanna thank Dora. Dora, thank you for your leadership through all of this. You are an amazing, strong woman and a great example for many of us, so thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Randy, now we can talk other dollars.
Good evening, board. So as you can see, the November, um, monthly financial statements are included in the board package. And, uh, PPLD as a whole, uh, for November, showing an impact to fund balance of nine million, seven sixty-five. Uh, we've already obviously closed the year and we're, we're, uh, working right now to prepare Working right now to prepare for the audit, so. I didn't quite have enough information to bring the December statements in, but um. Those changes on on most, I'm talking about December because November kind of ends up being like a little bit of a length up. But I'll incorporate the changes that are in the budget adjustment that you're all gonna look at tonight if approved. And so that'll reflect adjustments to the. And any actual activity that was uh bringing us through twelve thirty-one and after. We always have a lot of payables come in. Through the end of February that are for the previous year, so we have to charge those back. We don't call it those R and P, we get the bill. So the the net impact of fund balance um will come down significantly. I already know that, I just couldn't put it on a report yet. Page two, just looking at the general fund, again, um, I've said this many times before that um. This is our operating fund and the only thing it doesn't include is the capital uh improvement. And uh, the self-insurance, so both of our activities gonna be in this fund. Um, again, we're showing a, about a nine million dollar net impact of fund balance, that'll come down significantly for December. I did wanna mention on the uh. The the negatives that we are still showing on some of the revenue, many of those have corrected. And and or I had to do a rather, a pretty small adjustment to uh. To uh. Drop out things that I I knew had coming before the end of the year, so those are timing issues there. Uh, looking at our general fund expenditures. A lot of this favorable in each of the departments uh would be um. Contributing to that would be our vacancy pool. Number, which has not been spread amongst the departments based on where it was saved, and I've actually got that information ready for. Kim, our controller, to book that into our, into our records, so that'll also probably be on our December statement, so that. That smoothed that out a little bit, and it'll also get rid of the um. At- attrition savings um. Number there, I'll probably, for the budget and the actual, probably push that back into the department's department, so that's. That'll clear up that um anomaly there, kind of ends up being anomaly most of the year until we get to the end. Our capital projects fund on page five, it's actually fun. Again, um, activity that have been installed either in encumbrance or um. Just getting things rolling uh the way they should have been, there was a signif- significant increase in the. Spinners on that, that'll show up um on next month's statement, but. Uh, we're still showing as of November uh about three million, three fifty-five laborable. And uh, I I think we probably um closed out about two million dollars of that for the December statements. And then our self-insurance fund, that's actually um. Uh, I've done, I've not had to do any adjustments to this this year, and I didn't do anything for the. Budget adjustment because the contributions came in the way we expected them to, the spending has been um. Pretty much where we expected it to be. It's settled down a lot since uh. A COVID year and then a couple of years after that, they they had gotten pretty high, and that was understandable because I think a lot of people just weren't going to the doctor. And they had, it caught up on things. So um, this actually has really settled down. We ended the year last year with uh one million, three forty-three, and I had. Budgeted this year, planning that we would pull down on some of that reserve, that's, I I didn't want it to be that big, and so we did kind of. A little bit like a roller coaster, a little bit, maybe not uh. Super steep, but it's it's kind of a little bit of a guessing game, how much those planes are gonna be, and then um I adjusted accordingly, but I didn't have to do that this last year. And and then the adjustments themselves, if they are adjustments through um. I believe October is last resolution I had, and then of course I'll incorporate the December one when, and if you guys pass that tonight. And uh, that's it. Any questions?
Thank you, Randy. Public services, Tammy.
Okay, so before I go through a couple of highlights for public services. Um, later on, you're gonna hear from Jenny Pierce, the director of collection management in regards to the ILS RFP. But I wanted to take a second and not only thank her, but really acknowledge Colleen Medling, who is here with her. She is our ILS network administrator, so she really liked this process for that ILS. RFP, she kept us all on track, you know, she involved almost forty staff in this process. And so I really appreciate all of her patience and understanding and and. Um, following directions, she really, she's really done an amazing job, and I really appreciate all the things that the two of them have done. So I wanted to acknowledge that for her. And then to highlight some of the things that public services has done. Um, RHG provided almost ninety images to the Myron Stratten home for an award ceremony that they held. In yeah, sometime in January. Um, they are also going to be hosting when East was East. On Saturday, February first, from eleven thirty to one, so you are all welcome to come. Um, I'm pretty, they're pretty excited to present the changes that have taken place in that area over the years. Um, and then programming department hosted the Iraqo libraries to talk about their tween services. And how, and toured the space at East. So that was, that was kind of nice, they got a request to provide that. And then finally, for the update for bookmobiles, so bookmobiles has been working. On trying to find the location in the Rockman area uh since December. Um, it, some of the locations that they um. You look at um fell through, so we are moving on with another review of another location actually tomorrow. So we are trying to find it, but you know, it's a big bus, we gotta find space for it and um some other. Requirements that we have for that location, but we do put out a new bookmobile schedule at the first of every month. And it is our hope and intention to be able to provide a stop that's an all-day stop for bookmobile services.
Thank you, yes. Uh, support services, do we have any questions on any of the reports of support service? And yes.
Not really a, a question, but I just wanted to comment on the new website. It looked awesome, told Denise ahead of time, but I wanted to say it again, so. Thank you Denise and her team, she's crazy, I'm really good. Denise and her team uh on all the work there looks great and. Looks, looks great, the branding's great, it's super easy to navigate, so really appreciate the work you guys put on on that.
Thank you, Aaron. Anyone else? If not.
I I would just follow up and say the same.
I'm sorry.
I, uh, great job on the website, and then I also noticed that there is a um. Sort of a contest for the new library card, so I would get a lot of community engagement with that, with that design. We've got a lot already.
We have about a hundred and fifty-seven entries already, we're only halfway through the month.
When does that run through?
Runs through the end of the month.
End of the month.
We, Greg Rose, who does all of the library cards, said we've had the old one for about ten years, we're gonna get four new ones, so that's why we decided to do it.
Hey, anyone else? Hearing them, okay. The report.
Hey, good evening, everyone. Um, I did have a plan to also talk about website and ILS, so. Uh, Tammy and Mr. Salt already covered that, but I wanted to also thank Abby Simpson and Clint. On their website team for their hard work. Um, I know that they also had to make quite a bit of changes after reviewing it. And I want to also thank them for their patience and understanding. Thank you very much, I'm excited to see what we have there and. Um, uh, it, I, it's, 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 it took a long time, as you know.
Yes.
And it took a long process, so, so we are very happy about that. And um also, to give a little bit of a uh, kind of a background when it comes to ILS. Uh, integrated library system, I refer to it as the spine of every apartment, every library. So when uh we arrived, like people like me can sleep and read and. Uh, we finish our books and we want to get another one, that's all that happens to ILS. So thank you very much, Colleen. I know that you already made a lot of improvements when it comes to that, to our current system, and I can't wait uh to see what. Our new system um would do for for the community, so thank you. And also, it's been a very long process, very often. Such things the, like such things do not happen overnight, and it's been literally, we've, we've been working on it for years. To do a good job, so and again, uh, many thanks to uh PPLD team. Also, the exciting news we have that uh Mini Two Springs uh Carnegie Library's grand opening is on the seventh of February. Um, and as also, as you know, um, it, it was a lot of collaboration and working very closely. With the city of Mini Two Springs, so I want to take this opportunity to thank them. Um, and uh, that building is amazing, it's beautiful, so um. And uh, children actually get a fair space there, and when I didn't see mold. I was so happy, because if some of you recall, um, uh, manager of that library, where she worked. I remember, I I was so upset when I saw it years ago, there was literally black mold there. So now it's brand new, we wouldn't even know. Um, so, and again, uh, please um. Put it on your notice again, that's the seventh of February.
Will we get a invite for it? It's in my calendar, but I wasn't sure what time.
Yes, we are, we are finalizing all of that, and yes.
It's an evening.
For thirty, for thirty minutes, so. Um, and also, I want to take this opportunity and thank HR department and finance department. Uh, so all of the salary study that got completed and then all the input, a lot of work. That those two groups did, it's, it's amazing, it's immense, so um, there were times that they, they worked until. Twelve or one AM, uh, so uh, many thanks and thank you very much for making it happen. Um, again. Uh, there are a lot of work that goes behind the closed doors, or that our support services perform. Uh, that without them, uh, it would be impossible to um run the library system. So many thanks to those two departments and um other departments of yours as well. And uh, personally, I want to thank Michael Grebner. Michael Grebner's life uh has been rather interesting and challenging a couple of months. There were a lot of huge projects that he and his team handled, and uh, thank you very much for doing that. And thank you very much for ensuring that uh, we are actually, we were able to move into a new library in Mini Two Springs. So thank you, and again, um, it's been a. It, it's been a lot. So um, that's my report, and uh, do you have any questions?
During none, we'll go to consent items. Uh, the first thing on the consent item were the minutes. And we have various resolutions, I don't believe we need to go to each one of those. Because they're the yearly resolutions we go through, so uh, can I get? Do we have to vote on these? No.
No, they can help.
No. Do you have a question?
Uh, specifically the conflict of interest, interest statements. I don't understand why the board is voting on conflict of interest statements for the leadership team, the Friends of the. Library and the foundation organization with. Kind of followed out of the purview of what this board does. This board should only be approving the uh conflict of interest statements.
Yeah.
And not for everybody else.
I, I, I didn't even, I, I wondered about that myself when I read through it. So should that be included in there, or uh, remember when we went through the policies and we said some things were administration? And then uh po- uh board policies that were working on, what do you think, Tauna?
Uh, historically, I believe that all of that was included in one document before Scott. And then it got separated, and I believe that's why it got included, since always this one is included as the one document. So I think that was the uh reasoning behind that.
I disagree that that's what we should be voting on for those consent items. Board of trustees, one. Okay, I'm sorry, sorry. Uh, so the conflict of interest statements that are in the consent items. We should, as a board, should only be voting on as board of trustees, conflict of interest statements, not the leadership team. Nor the foundation, the Friends of the Library. That was my concern about that. And yes, I understand that in the past, it was all the second, but we didn't make that change. And hold just the board of trustees out of that, instead, we should only be responsible for the board of trustees.
Yeah, I was gonna say, I, I agree with the friends and the foundation, they have their own boards and their own dealings. Um, I've got no issues with that. My only thought is, they deal with. Funds related to the district, I don't think that's a close enough title, I guess they have their own bylaws, their own boards, I'm fine passing that off. Um, I think leadership team, I think it's appropriate that we would vote on the conflict of interest for the. The administration leadership team, since they're uh closely related to the running of this district. So I would propose that we keep that in and remove the other team.
So to me, that would be more of an HR responsibility than necessarily board of trustees responsibility. Because they don't report to us. That's an internal organization to do this thing. We're gonna be doing a conflict of interest in the relationship between the two of them.
Uh, Debbie?
I was, I was just gonna ask, um, is our concern that we wanna make sure that they address it? I mean, do we wanna say it like that, 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 we need, that through the CEO, the leadership team. Also needs to let the board know that they signed conflict of, developed and signed conflict of interest statements. I get what you're saying, but, but I think it's also in our interest. To make sure that they don't have conflicts of interest, since we're in charge, so. So is there a way to sort of, yeah, I agree, take the foundation out, take the. The friends out, because they have their own boards, and they'll tell their employees what to do, but um.
So we're looking at what you're thinking as a board of trustees and leadership or.
I, I can understand with Scott that, that we don't need to dictate what their conflict of interest. Statement is, but I want them to have one and sign it, and I want to know that they did. So I guess that's where I've.
Okay, Aaron, you look like you're ready to speak.
Yeah, I've got a couple thoughts. Um, one is. I believe. I don't know if it's actually addressed in the agreement, but we have agreements, I know with the foundation, I don't remember what the agreement is with the friends. And so if it's something that we wanna make sure gets addressed, we could always make sure that it's written into the agreement, and that comes up for review. Um, the other thing I was gonna say is, I don't know that it's necessary for us to vote on the conflict of interest form. Like, if they're, it's sort of like the bylaws, like it just, when there's change, the need to be made, we make the changes. But if there's not change that need to be made, I don't know that we need to vote on it. And so.
Yes, we have.
We voted on it in the past, but it doesn't. I guess my question is, were there any changes made to the document that would require us to reapprove that form? Or is it something that we could just take the whole slate of them off the consent?
Pretty sure we did make changes to it, when we pulled, just the board of trustees, said, this is your conflict of interest. Board of trustees, and then they had all the other ones subsequent there as well, so to me, yes, it makes some changes.
I thought those changes were made last year.
No, I looked at the uh January twenty-fourth. And the conflict of interest statement was a single document, and it did not specifically call out board of trustees or anybody else. That, that's why I wrote this, these questions down, because to me, it just should be. That that's why I wrote this, these questions down, because to me, it just should be the Board of Trustees. And I I agree that, yes, they should be signing it. I agree that the leadership team should be signing that. But to me, that's not a responsibility that we as a board should be looking at. That should really be within the H R. Uh organization.
The only one that we would need is.
So you think that Tino should sign a different one than what the leadership team signs? To to my, my thought is, we oversee her and the same form that she signs would be applicable to the rest of the L T. And so, we could split it off. But now we're creating forms just because of hierarchy and it feels. It feels a little messy to me. And so that's why I was like, if we just do the board and then the L T's form. That seems to make sense to me. So, those are my thoughts.
So does that mean that the Board of Trustees is now responsible for all of the leadership's conflict?
The form? The form and the way that it's, like what it says, but. Well, well, I don't know that I understand what your point is.
So, we as a board are approving the conflict of interest for the leadership organization. So, when we do that, we're saying, okay, leadership team, we expect you to fill this out. We want to see everybody's document. To me, that's not a responsibility of the board. That should be something that the H R organization should be responsible for. Because the H R organization would keep that, um with our records, with the individual leadership. That's not something that we as the board should be tracking. Is that the way the school district does it? Does the Board of Education, um the the? They expect all of their people to sign that and then they keep track of that. I was under the impression that was more of the uh. Superintendent's responsibility.
We don't approve the form. That's why I was questioning whether or not we actually needed to approve it at all. So.
So what do we want to do about that? What is your suggestion?
Just approve the Board of Trustees.
And?
And not everybody else's.
Uh how does the rest of the board feel about that?
I feel that we still need to have the leadership and the leadership team, and that they should have the same form.
And that's because of Tiana's position, right? I would, because we oversee her. Okay, anybody else have any? Anybody else have any other thoughts?
If we oppose the the text of the form, we can still instruct H R to be responsible for collecting that from the leadership team, correct?
I would think so, yes.
Would you like to, may I?
Yes, go ahead.
Would you like to, would you like to have a separate discussion later about this topic?
I'm wondering if we should pull this out and have a uh maybe a deeper dive discussion, give you a chance to think about it. Uh in February before and be ready to vote on it in February. Does that make sense?
That's fine. Um I still think that we should vote for at least ours. Because we need to sign this every year.
Yeah, at the beginning of the year, we don't want to do sign it.
So I would suggest that we just at least, or with the Board of Trustees, conflict of interest statement. And we can discuss the other ones.
Is there an issue if we don't do it until February and we can do it in one lump sum?
I'm not saying anybody can do that here, but. Conflict of interest, so if we have a conflict, we're uh we're violating that.
Is there not a, is there not a time like, this is the day, do you know the date of the conflict is?
I'd have to go look and see if there's.
Like, if this isn't voted on, thirty days.
I think all of these, just because they come in that we need to vote on them. Uh first of all, some, the rest of them are is because we we pay money for all these other things and they're over a hundred thousand dollars. And this form is just something that we normally follow, we still out it in January usually. And uh. And we now have electronic correctly. Am I correct now? Uh so, um I I don't know. Should we vote on what we want to do or, I mean, Scott believes we should at least vote on the Board of Trustees.
We should remove item five from the consent agenda. And that should go to another point on the agenda that would be items removed from consent, which doesn't exist. We'll need to create that. So. Oh, I think it probably go.
So where should we?
Probably go at B six.
At the end of unfinished business or?
Well, it's unfinished business would be anything that was not example glass, wouldn't you?
Yeah, it wouldn't be number six, right?
So, we could insert it above the officers and the, so put it on as B three if we wanted, sorry. Yeah, we could put it at at B four and move the other officers and committees down.
Okay. So we'll put it right after uh the supplemental budget thing?
Yes.
Okay. And we'll discuss this.
So, I guess to make this, uh I make a motion to amend the agenda to add a item as. B four, renumbering B four to B five and B five to B six, that would be items removed from consent.
Second. Yeah. Okay, I heard a first and a second, a motion and a, somebody second that. So it, we'll discuss this in another.
We need to vote.
And now I'll offer the vote. Everyone that is in favor of moving this uh down the agenda. Uh and I can't remember what number it'll be. I think it'll be four. Uh all of us in favor, say aye. All of us pose, same sign. Hearing none, we'll move this to another place in the agenda. That'll. Yes.
So the bylaws do specifically call out in Article eight subsection three, the Board of Trustees has developed and reviews a conflict of interest. Policy regularly, trustees as well as outside committee members, less complete a questionnaire and sign a conflict of interest statement. So it doesn't say specifically what they.
Because I just know things happen, just happens to happen.
Okay, can we move on? Okay, thank you. Uh uh now, looking at all the other consent items that we have, are we okay with all of those other ones? Anyone have any other questions? Okay, so we'll move forward and we're gonna go into new business and we will have the I L S. Uh R F P recommendation with a little presentation by Jenny.
Hi, everyone. I guess you can hear me okay.
Is it hold the mic down if that's easier?
Um, thank you for the time I've been taking up. It's longer to make that and I appreciate the speed on it. This is clearly the most exciting thing on. I might be a little bit biased, I'm trying to vote, I might be a little biased because we spend a lot of time with the I L S. And uh for folks who aren't familiar with the term, which is pretty sexy, it's Integrated Libraries System. So the Integrated Library System is the system that is the core of all circulation functions in the. And it is the system that maintains the collection. So, whether you're checking out items, you're getting a library card, replacing holes. You're searching catalog, or even through using the self-checks, um or the mobile app or the online catalog. Uh if you're using the databases or Libby, all of these things, if they aren't directly operated by the. Integrated Library System, they connect back to it to authenticate the user and give them the permission to access the resources. So it's, it's just a, for for any kind of sizable library, it's an absolute necessity. And we began thinking about uh putting out our R F P for an integrated library system before the pandemic, probably back in twenty eighteen. Colleen remembers, it was one of the interview questions. How would you feel about doing an I L S migration if needed? And um the. So this has been a process that we've been thinking about and we actually hope to approach quite a long time ago, but. It is a big process. If you do the I L S R F P, it's a very involved evaluation process. And then if you actually migrate and change to another system, not only do all your staff have to work on the new system, but all your patrons are impacted by it. Through your online catalog primarily and maybe through your mobile app. And so. We and we were working our way towards putting the R F P out and then we played with the COVID pandemic. And we had so much uncertainty and so many big things that we had to change about our operations that that got put on the back of it. And we, back in twenty twenty three, decided this is the time. And so we put out the R F P in twenty twenty four. And we had, as was mentioned, over forty staff from all areas of the library involved in. Evaluating particular areas of the proposals that we received. And they also evaluated onsite demonstrations by the vendors. We were, we gave them a rigorous run through. We we had about two hundred and forty written criteria of what we want in an I L S system and what we need. And they had to respond whether their system provided that. Then they had to come and do two-day demonstrations here. Uh that were attended based on what they were demonstrating. We had different groups of staff attend. So if you had, if they were focused on showing acquisition and cataloging, we had staff, you know, collection management attending that. If they were displaying um the the circulation functions, we had all of our frontline staff. And so, we really had our experts reviewing the systems and scoring these vendors. We had four vendors who were qualified. Replied and those were uh our current, our incumbent system is called Simpity and its vendor is R C D X. We had the Library Corporation post their I L S product. Um we, there was one open source I L S product, which was proposed by a particular company, the Support Skid. And that that product is called Koha and the company is Bywater. And another large library vendor called Claravate proposed their I L S product, which is called Polaris. We're currently paying about two hundred and thirty-three thousand a year for our I L S. It is a big system. And so we pay the annual maintenance cost for the system, test server, um for the online catalog. For a a lot of things that feed into that system. Um so, in the recommendation which you have, you can see there's. We provided a year two cost for each of the vendors because the year, the first year cost with the one-time implementation cost. Is not necessarily reflective of what the ongoing cost would be that year two, after you get past the implementation. Is a little bit more reflective, but we included both the year two cost and the one-time implementation cost. And I just want to note, as you can see, there's, they vary widely. And part of the reason that those one-time costs vary widely is that the current system. Doesn't have to have a migration. We already have it. They don't have to do trading. We've already been trained. And so, their cost is the lowest of anybody for. Uh for, it's not even the new system. Um in fact, I'm surprised there's a cost at all, but there is. And then we, we have um a range up to um one of our, the higher cost uh. For implementation actually is Polaris. They include some things that the other vendors don't include in their migration. And one of the big things for us is, they include the extraction of the data from our system. And they actually work with a third party that specializes in extracting data. From our particular system and knows that Polaris system very well. So, we have experts who would help. Do that migration part of it for us and. Having that expertise would help save us time and ensure being able to stay on a. A designated timeline to try to migrate to a new system. So it's actually quite valuable for us to have that. And it's not even something that the other systems offer. Um we also, we have, one thing we asked for in our biz was a certain amount of customization work. Whenever we go to a new system, you know, we, we don't want to lose things that function well that we have that may not be in a new system. And so, we might want some customization done. So we had them all quote one hundred hours of customization work. And those prices vary by vendor. So we put sort of the high end of what that quote might, or what that might look like for a vendor. Sorry, I might sneeze in a minute. Uh so, to to summarize, um. We met, our steering committee met after the scores were all, uh were all figured out. And the steering committee reviewed the scoring and agreed that they wanted to put forward for recommendation of the highest scoring. Uh vendor. And that was Claravate with Polaris. They were the top scorer in the written criteria and the onsite demonstrations. Um and. They uh so that is, we are being forward as as our recommended vendor. They wanted to tell you about some of the things that you would get. For patrons, there's some really notable improvements, uh particularly with their online experience with the online catalog and their accounts. They can opt to save their reading history, their checkout history. They can save a search. If they do a search on a particular topic of interest, they can actually save the search. So that they can just execute it whenever they want to. If it's something that they always want to find, the new children's um. New children's books on a certain topic or whatnot. Um the online catalog, in our opinion. Is a more streamlined, better search experience. They do what they call a a work level roll-up. So when you, if you were to look up a popular title in one record, you're going to see tabs for the print version of the title. Um maybe an audiobook version of the title, maybe the ebook version, maybe the large print, everything that we have. That is sort of that same work will be in one record. So instead of scrolling through or having to limit by the. Like currently, we have facets, so you can limit if you just want to look for DVDs or something like that. You actually can just do the search on the title if you have it all there. Which we're really, really excited about. We, staff want that. And I think a lot of our patrons would really, really appreciate that. Uh and one of the other really nice things that patrons would get with this is the mobile app that we would be using allows patrons to check out items. Through the mobile app. So if you might have your family and you're in the children's department, you can just check out the items that you would like to to take with you. Through your app and not have to go to a self-check machine or a staff service point if you if you want to. For staff. Um then one of the major benefits is that this is a web-based client. Um we, I T knows how tedious it is to to upgrade individual PCs. And even if we're rolling that out centrally, it is a fair amount of work. With a web-based staff client. Uh it's secure, we have a modern and intuitive interface, we think will take less time for new slack to train on. Uh we think it'll actually be. Easier for our current staff to use. Um so that's one of the benefits for staff. One of the things that, this is very library-centric, but we can merge duplicate records. We run into a problem, even with duplicate, if there's duplication, checking. People's names change, um people go from being Robert to being Bob or whatever. We have duplicate accounts sometimes for people. And this lets us merge those accounts. That's definitely for the library staff, I might. Anyway, um. We, there's some efficiency improvements as well. For everybody, being able to search the catalog and find what you want to find more quickly is a benefit. Um everyone's used to Googleize searching and and this gets us closer to that kind of a good experience. And I think with the, I mentioned staff training, time learning system, learning classroom. One of the other things that can really nice benefit is. P P L D's collection floats. And what that means is, you might check something out at Cheyenne and re-return it um to Fountain. And Fountain might not have room for it. Normally, it would just stay at Fountain. It doesn't, Cheyenne doesn't own it. It doesn't get sent back to Cheyenne automatically. But a lot of our smaller branches just don't have extra shelving space. And so they have to spend time sort of deciding, okay, what are we gonna transfer to these larger locations? That have shelving space. But this I L S has a system where we configure it to let it know how much shelving space we have at each location for each kind of material. When we turn, when things get turned in, if that location doesn't have space, automatically routes it right to go to another location. So, this is just a fraction, you know, of the of the things that we learned about the system that excited us. And so. Um that's why it's so exciting. And so, the other thing I just want to mention is that timeline for implementing a new system. Is largely dependent on how many other clients the vendor is also migrating, because they do have limited staff. And so, um we would like to get on, uh you start working with vendors soon. And it's our hope to be able to migrate to Polaris either at the very, very end of the year. Or very early in next year, but that does depend on their workload as well. So, that's what I have to tell you. And if you, if the board has this question, go right ahead.
Thank you. Could you talk about the different levels of cards that will be?
Sure. So the system also has the ability to create cards with different levels of access. And we find that we, we currently use that for things like our our mobile checkouts are longer than our. For things like our, our bookmobile checkouts are longer than our, than our, if you come into the facility because the bookmobile's. Not, not there all the time. We have longer checkouts for homebound people. We have, uh, out of district library cards. So people who don't live in our district that we want to allow to check out books, but maybe they can't do it to a library loan or use the databases. We have that level of access and, um, I know it's been asked before. Do we have levels of access that we can provide for children that might be different for adults? And that is something that can be created. Where we could have a card that parents could opt into, to. Have children be able to check out things that are only in the children's area and maybe not in the adult shelving area or the teen shelving area. So we have some, some flexibility. It's not just a one, one card serves all. There are a lot of different, different needs and different things that we need to provide.
Thank you. Will the existing cards work? Or will we have to reissue cards for other agents?
That is a good question. I think there's probably a way that we could maintain the existing numbers. Usually that is not. Um, an inflexible point for vendors. Um. So that is something that we would definitely have to look at. And Colleen, I might just ask you, what could be your past experience?
My past experience of migrating library systems, no problem.
And then I guess let's turn to my last question. Uh, the migration services that this group offers, we talked to you, their references about how that migration. Process worked, if they had issues with sort of extracting data and getting it loaded back in.
I don't think that we went that deep with our references. Um, that was handled thoroughly and spoke through several staff and finance had the. Questions that they asked. Um, we have talked with the vendor about it in the past and that is part of the reason. They like to have, have this done by the company that they work with is because it. Because it's, I mean, you can't say flawless about anything, but you're dealing with somebody who really knows the structure of the data and, um. The differences between the some, the system we're on and, and the system we would like to go to because things have a different terminology and whatnot. So. Um, I think that. Feel good about just the fact that they have tried this, they, this, this vendor is a tried vendor who has done this many times for them.
But we have some questions.
I do. I have several questions. And you invited one of them, so thank you. I'm assuming that this has, uh, MFA, multi-factor authentication.
Well, that is something I can't respond to as far as logging onto your account, um, for your, your library.
Certainly not, not for the patrons, but for the staff. If there are issues that need to, they need to work on or they need to add. Uh, equipment, something like that. This is for the staff, not her.
Yes.
It does mean the WCA has the two point one security requirement, but we've been working on our own website. I was trying to remember how we were W. Anyway, and, um. For staff. It is a web-based system, which inherently is gonna give us sort of security that we might not have with our current staff client. Um, and what's nice is that they do provide, you know, with it being web-based. That we can use it anywhere. We have that protection. We don't have to go through a VDM or something like we do now with our staff client.
Uh, may I just inter, uh, IT, uh, was involved in all of that? And if you met Justin.
Wasn't going to let that go by, right?
Um. Yes, because it can be annoying sometimes how many times we need to put that in. So just saying.
Since it's a web-based as well, I'm assuming. That, uh, it's not going to be the application itself, the ILS will not be installed. Average, it will be. AMS or something like that.
Right, right. It, it would actually, the server functionality would be hosted by the vendor. Unless it is through AWS. Through the vendor, but the client itself is web-based. So both the staff and patient clients are web-based.
Okay. Um. About the migration process. So right now we're paying, uh, Dynex two thirty. Um, a year, or remains on the existing system. I'm assuming that there's gonna be overlap. So we would be still paying two hundred and twenty thousand for the existing ILS. And at the same time, we would spend anywhere between a hundred and seventy-six and two hundred thousand for the new system. Um, and then because of obviously the implementation cost. So we're looking at around a half million for both systems.
It's a little bit different than that. We would be looking at an overlap of the two systems by about three months. Um, to, to complete our, complete what we need to unwind and get up on the other. So we would have. One year where we might have a three month overlap between our two hundred thirty-three thousand ending and starting our. One ninety-five. And then we have sort of a separate implementation cost, which we budgeted separately. Um, that we at least planned for separately. So Kim, we looked at it, what we would need potentially if we were to be able to complete a migration in twenty twenty-five. With a three month overlap and we budgeted it a little bit extra for. The ILS maintenance costs through that three month overlap. Uh, and then when we go into twenty twenty-six, well, hopefully it would be that just the one ILS cost, but we're. But we then have a separate one, as I, as it looks. As I understand it, um, for the main, I'm sorry, the migration cost.
So would Dynex refund any of the money? So if we rolled to twenty-six? And we had a three month gap, what about three month?
My, my hope would be that we would be, before we renew. The Cersei Dynex ILS, which happens in January, it'll happen in January of twenty twenty-six. Would be that we could negotiate to don't re-renew for a number of months. Uh, that would be, that would be, that's a big factor. Um. They wouldn't have much to lose. I mean, by just giving us three months instead of forcing us to do a year, it's. Well, it would be really.
Yeah. Uh, okay, and, uh, let's see. Yep, that's all I have. Thank you.
Anyone else have any other questions? If not, uh, can we, uh, hear a, a motion to accept the recommendation?
A move that the PTLB Board of Trustees approved the integrated, the ILS, the Integrated Library System, very sexy. RFP recommendation as presented.
I'll second.
Okay, we have the first and the second. Any other comments before we vote? There are none. I'll call for the vote. All those in favor of the recommendation of the ILS, uh. Uh, RFPs during the, um, signify by saying, eh, yay?
Hi.
Hi.
Sorry, I didn't know. Hi, okay. Yay, yay. I'm so excited. I mean, it's so intuitive. It's kinda scary though. Uh, anyone opposed, things sign? Hearing none, it passed. Oh, I can hardly wait to see what happens.
Thank you so much. We think we had a really light this one. Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you for that wonderful presentation. Okay, uh. Uh, the U-Pass presentation by Heather.
Anything you follow in new ILS?
That's, uh, are you gonna be, how can you beat it out?
So I'm, so I know that the board is facing this direction, but hopefully you've seen the presentation and a personal screen behind you. I've asked, um, to present some information regarding the appraisal that was in your packet around U-Pass libraries. So I put together some things just to use in time. For your discussion. So the U-Pass library, right? And that's up, for those who don't know where that is, is up towards where the North Pole, if you're familiar where that is. That's where it's located. It's been a part of PPLD since nineteen sixty-four to have the U-Pass library. Uh, where it is currently located, it's been in that building since nineteen seventy-five. Uh, it is a historic building. And so as you've seen, we've done maintenance over the years, but did a major overhaul in two thousand and four. Investing in money to make sure that we were, uh, making it more usable for what would be in the modern library. Uh, but as you see, it was constructed in eighteen thirty-five. It's approximately a little bit over two thousand square feet. Uh, and from our master, uh, Slough's master plan talks about about seven thousand people that live within fifteen minutes of us. It is currently a building that we lease and then we have, property is owned by Casade Fire Protection District. Their kind of fire station is on the same parcel as U-Pass library. So that's important to note. So if there is discussion about whether or not maybe from that leased area to purchase it, so it's an owned area, there would be personally involved to divide that. So one of the things that was recommended in the facility's master plan. Uh, was to look at unstaffed controlled access service model. So what I should share is that currently that building is open from ten to one and two to six on Mondays. Close Tuesday, Wednesday. Open from ten to one, two to six on Thursday. And again, that's closing for lunch because we have, for safety reasons, we have people in the building at a time, right? Um, and Friday, Saturday, nine to one and two to five. So it is limited hours. So one of the recommendations for getting able to maximize service while not bearing a burden of having more staff. Is looking at an unstaffed controlled access code. So what that looks like, and you shared it, but that's, that's amazing. Um, and people may think that this is a model only looked at in rural libraries, but they shared that there's like. Los Angeles libraries that are doing this. So even some urban libraries are looking at this. To balance, right, cost of staffing with access for patients. So basically what it does is there's, you put together, they don't have this yet, but it would be like a screening process. And then folks can access the building even when it's unstepped. So you provide some staffing on certain days, obviously you have circulation things around. Maybe to do some programs, things like that. But then there's other times that folks can basically enter, like if you go to kiosk. Pick up holes, check things out, make sure turns, things like that. So that's kind of what that looks like. So the hybrid model will allow us to serve better on the location. And in fact, the facility's master plan recommended that model. For several buildings potentially down the road, but this was one. To give you an idea of why we're concerned about staffing, I just wanted to share Douglas County, as you see, has three hundred and twenty-six staff for seven bridges. One of which is open two and a half days a week. Um, Arapahoe Libraries has around three hundred and sixty employees for eight libraries. We have three hundred and eighty-six staff for fourteen buildings. So we're spread pretty thin, which has been shared before. Right? So in ways to try and think of, yes, adding humans is expensive. But also we do wanna make sure that as many patrons as possible can access our buildings and get their resources. This is a creative model for trying to spell that. Um, one thing to be note is that, um, Michael Brightner shared estimated, and this is an estimate. Um, of adjusting doors for self-service access as well. It's some additional ABA kind of things that we could do to it. Be roughly another seventy thousand dollars. So it's important to note that when we think of public cost. This is directly from the facility's master plan. I figure one question would be, well, what's the condition of the building? Very good. Like. One of the, as far as condition does. So just to do a reminder, I showed you with that kind of facility's condition index. What that map look like, where I fell, and then again, what that look like for that building? That is separate from the appraisal. We have the appraisal, they kind of appraisal value, it's kind of like when you think about your house. There's an accessory value, there's a market value, and then there's like a cost replacement like for insurance, right? So these are why there's, there's several different. Things like that. This is just letting you know that from the facility's master plan perspective, that building is in good condition. Okay, so a quick summary, Sent Valuation was the company that completed the market value appraisal on New Year's Eve. Um, currently reminder owned by the Fire Protection District up there. They said in that appraisal, they weren't considering, um, existing lease obligations. And since it's not before, sometimes. Having a lease obligation can factor into the appraisal of the building that's time to look at selling it or repurposing it. That was not considered there. Um, it is under a D restriction that allows for public use. Um, currently, but they did a free simple evaluation, which we, we, we would own it outright if we looked at going that direction with it. And it was valued at four hundred and eighty. That's the building and roughly a third acre around it, right? Cause there's a very big space in this space that. Um, like out low, you can pick. So that's land and building. Alright. So, um, I know that the board had kind of hinted at having some additional questions. So I wanted to go ahead and address those here. So the others, if you have the same question. Um, there was a question raised about, uh, how many people it serves within a thirty minute drive radius? That we don't have, but we did have a fifteen minute from the facility master plan, which. I shared, right, population forty-seven thousand people, user base roughly eight thousand people. Um, and you know, things like that. When we think about however, user registrations and access points. Remembering that it's a building that's not open as frequently as other buildings are, right? So if you were to expand access and say they can be open on days that are currently closed. We could reasonably assume that more people will be able to take advantage of it. It's perhaps possible that there are people who don't access it as frequently or who haven't. Because the days that are open conflicts in their work schedule or something like that. Okay, so that's important to know. Uh, I know there was some discussion about the cost for the lease as it currently stands. So in twenty twenty-four. It costed twelve thousand seven hundred and thirty-eight dollars a year, roughly fifty cents a square foot. Um, that's set to go up for twenty twenty-five to seventy-five cents a square foot, so nineteen thousand one hundred dollars. And then in twenty twenty-six next year, up to a dollar per square foot. So that's twenty-five thousand four hundred and seventy-six dollars for the year. Those terms, it would then hold at that dollar per square foot, um, and then be renegotiated potentially in twenty thirty-four. That's how far out we're kind of set on that scale. Um, so that's a question that, uh, I wanna answer. And then the one other piece is if I can share the map. Um, and generalize standing by ready, so you can see where it is. Um. I was asking, you know, how close is the nearest library? Uh, it is four point eight miles from Manitou Library, but it's uphill, right? Uh, so that's just something to give you an idea of, yes, roughly five miles. Uh, it is a part of the community that gets a lot more snow and things like that compared to say, Boise. So something to be aware of. And then additionally, the other map, which shares from, and again, this is from the facility's master plan, that it shares, you know. A lot of its patronage is near it and then kind of up the road, kind of the northwest region. So. Uh, unlike many of our libraries, we kind of have a circle around them that it serves. It kind of serves folks all the way to the edge of the county. That makes sense. So yes, even though it's five miles from the next library, we would have to go past that to keep going through it. They're all on one side of that for a library, if that makes sense, just to give you. So. Having, giving you a little summary of background, anticipating what questions you can anticipate and answering some questions that had already been formed. Are there additional questions?
Yeah, so is this discussion being driven because the lease is coming due or because the fire district? Wants to sell the building. If we don't buy it, they'll sell it to someone else or? Did we initiate, so what's sort of the history of?
Yes, yeah. Okay, so you gave permission to have conversation when the, when the lease was last renewed, right? It's coming up today, we're going to do something in twenty twenty-four. In that discussion, they did share that they are interested in perhaps selling the, the property. Um, the, as I mentioned, there's a delimitation. So their, their purchase. You know, po- possible people is not the whole of the world, right? It's has to be used for public building. Um, but they did kind of share that if we were interested in, in purchasing, that they'd be interested. So there was kind of mutual, we started a conversation when it was time to renew the lease, but then also they kind of said, yeah, you know, we. We could be interested in selling. So there was kind of a mutual for each other. I think part of the other reason it was coming up at this stage too, was again, we were just looking at the, and what. Recognizing that the facility's master plan encourages to move for lease, not lease from properties. And some type of conversation.
Do we know what costs would be associated with the reparcelling?
Yes-ish. So I asked, uh, our real estate, um, agent folks who, who kind of does things with looking for rental properties as well as permanent properties. Anywhere from five thousand to fifteen thousand. Uh, he had looked at different properties and so I, I can't say that I'm the expert as to why it was one or the other. It's based on what. Park the county is in or what kind of property is. Uh, but when I did ask that question, you said roughly, it could be more than five thousand, fifteen thousand. So if you wanted to estimate high, then it's.
So that would be a shared cost with the seller as well as?
Typically it is a shared cost, but obviously we have not entered into any discussions beyond getting the appraisal. Uh, maybe the permission, we're going to, to do any of that. But I do believe that that is not an uncommon practice.
And a person could purchase it. And just make sure they lease to a government agency. They don't. It didn't have to be us, so we could. Lose that area, especially with the investment.
They, yes, that, they could. They could still have the de-restriction do that if they want.
And I have not been up to you past some quite a while. But I don't remember in the past. Um. And I was looking at the comparables. They weren't really in that area.
Right.
And that is a concern, correct?
Sure. Yeah. Again, um, you know, this discussion wasn't for, you know, what we agree with the building and the appraisal. Let's just present the appraisal and see.
Yeah.
What you'll hopefully have. Thank you.
Yeah.
Well, yeah, do my best.
Um. Do we have the appraisal? Um, that we can share on the screen?
Yeah.
Alright, I'm sorry. I didn't realize this. Okay, so on page one of the work of the packet, one oh four of one fifty-three, or page twenty-one of the actual appraisal. Uh, I'm looking at. Where the proposed subdivision would be, you know, page twenty-one shows. The whole thing and then page twenty-two shows the subdivision. Uh, my concern about. The subdivision portion. And this is a really bad picture, but. The fire station itself is just. The west, no, east. East of the actual library, correct? If I'm looking at this diagram correctly, or this picture, I'm showing that the road. That connects. The library and that the fire department we would use falls under our review of ownership. Does that mean that we are responsible for any maintenance on that road? Especially if you've got fire traps that run into there?
Don't know the answer to that. Um, certainly if the board would like us to engage further, it would be a favorable company over the first commerce. We can ask all kinds of questions and spend that money. But I don't know the answer to how that works as far as. Um, maintenance. That might also be something with that areas. Restriction, but I guess we do not know the answer.
Okay. Uh, the other question I had has to do with drainage that's behind the library. Um, I think, I cannot remember the year, but there were, uh, issues with flooding. In that, um. Drainage area behind the library and I think that. The fire district put sandbags. Along there to keep the water from going over the lip. Um. Since we would technically, if this moves forward, if we would own that partial. Part of that drainage. I'm assuming that we would be responsible for that.
Can't speak to what was done in the past. I'm not super familiar with that situation, but what I can say is yes, we owned it, then we have. Quite a bit of latitude in how we want to address things like runoff and things like that. That is in addition ownership, right? That you can make permanent interventions versus being, having to work with the O S C, we sir. Sir, um. But I can't speak to what that was.
Scott, how many years ago was that?
I. I just remember talking to Gary about it. Was that brought up during one of my visits to you? Laura said that she thinks it was around twenty twelve.
It was about Old Canyon fires, so it was twelve and thirteen.
Thank you.
And, and if I'm looking at this also correctly, the. Where it begins, the rock begins or the drainage begins would be on the fire department side. So I imagine if they would make changes to theirs, then we would have to coordinate with them to make sure that our changes or that our existing. Drainage is, what can you amp up what they've done, what they've changed, assuming that that would be.
And again, I imagine we would partner with neighbors as we do with other buildings that we own, but, um. So, uh, perhaps. Um, but again, we have a latitude to make permanent changes to the property or the building to try to implement things like that.
Good.
And may I, um, if, uh, if the trustees authorize us to enter into negotiations, right? That's what we are saying today. Then all those questions will be part of those negotiations and also then it will. Um, give us better understanding and opportunity to gather all that information. So also just to, I wanted to make sure that that's the purpose of this. If the board of trustees will authorize us to enter conversations with that. About that.
But those are great questions that we will be happy to ask and do more research to come back.
And I'm assuming, I don't know which way I should go on this one, so I'll just go straight forward. Um, I'm assuming too, like some of the issues, even though it was sort of a catastrophic event and quite a few years ago that caused the flooding. But if there were an issue because it's another government entity, it would just be an MOU that we could work out as well of who.
I would imagine that's the case. Yeah, but again, we haven't.
Which can be simpler.
Yeah, yeah, and then maybe those decisions.
Yeah, and as I noticed here, it says it's a FEMA flood zone D, which is not classified as a flood hazard area. So it seems like that was a. Related directly to the erosion associated with the, the, uh, lot of time.
Good memories. Thank you.
You have another question.
Of course. Um. So are there any, uh, joint utilities? What are the words? The sewage flow from their building down to the library building? It's completely separate.
They are, they are unseparated off the exit to the.
Good. Um. Inspection wise, I know that this is just an appraisal, but have we done inspection? On that.
So that was not part of the appraisal, but they did, when they did the facilities master plan, right? They did realize every building. So, I mean, it wasn't. We did not do an inspection for this purpose and we decided, obviously, that's what the board would like us to do. But we did, it just happens that we very recently did have, um. That contractors looking at every building to look at what the, the indexes were for differently, so. Yeah, reasonably, but that's not part of the law.
Just trying to make sure that we don't get the, oh, we gotta replace the entire.
No. Uh, yeah, and, and if, if, if the board were to decide and look at, and there's all kinds of things like that that would be rolled into that process. Uh, again, this is just your jumping off point to kind of, you can think about.
You're welcome.
Okay.
Um. So where's this money coming from if we move forward with purchase? Well, as you. As you know, um, we do have, uh, our site funds and that, that's sort of board's credit. There's obviously a reason why I ask that question. Yeah. Um. And then, uh, I guess the question would be. Discussions, I think that the ask is, uh, just to move forward with negotiations. And discuss things, but not necessarily approve a purchase.
Correct.
The building.
Yes.
Let me make sure that that's clear.
Yeah.
Uh, that, uh, is, uh, that's what we're asking because again, we cannot start, we cannot start asking those questions without being authorized. By the trustees for us to do so. So negotiations gather all this information, so.
So why would this be a decision item that we would have to approve?
Because again, uh, that's the author, like because the trustees need to authorize us, like we did the similar, similarly when we went to Springs. But, uh, we did consult our legal and that was, was the, uh, uh, advice given to us as well.
So our lawyer much said.
Yes, it's a, it's a good idea and it should be voted on. Yes.
Debbie, you have?
I do. Um. Not necessarily opposed to. To having those discussions, but, um. I would like to see, um. Whether we do it in a series of regular board meetings or we set aside. Another board meeting. I really think. We need to talk about. What our priorities are. And. Why we would spend money in one case and not. Others, because. Um, you know, for a while, our priority was we, we can't do anything until we address this. Capital project backlog. And. Um. You know, good opportunities. They come along. More than, more often than we sometimes believe. And, and I know we had the facilities master plan to guide us, but even in that plan. They recommend that we do that, that we set priorities. So are our priorities that we. Do all the capital stuff first, are our priorities that we. At least have a timeline for how we're doing them. And then if we have extra money, we'll look at. Buying buildings or is our priority, we're not going to do anything else until we figure out how to get. Something further east. Or. I, I mean, it just seems to me we have this ever. Ongoing discussion and whatever's in front of us. Is the most important, but, but I think it's important for us to. To hash that out among ourselves and come up with a. Okay, well, you know, this is a good opportunity, but if we're going to do this, we're not going to do this. And, and really know what those trade-offs are and do that in a. In a public way so that when we do make decisions. It's obvious why we made them. We turned down this opportunity because, as you all know, we were in this meeting where we said our most important priority is this. And so even though this is wonderful and if we had the money, we would do it. I mean, we all do that in our own budgets. You know, we all make budgets and our most important thing is to pay off the credit card or to get a new car. Or whatever it is. And then something else wonderful. Oh, gosh, we could go to Hawaii. Well, if we go to Hawaii, we start, I mean, it's the same process, only bigger. And so I think it would be. I would, it would be good for our. Our trust level. If we hash those out in public, I think. And I think it would also give us. Some guidance as, as to where we want to go. So. That was a very long one, didn't I? I'm not opposed to opening discussions, but I. Would be opposed at this point to making. Those kinds of decisions without having had those discussions first. So I'll just. Roll out that.
Thank you, Debbie. Um. And everyone else that had questions or comments, I do have, and I don't know if it was even in the report, but. Uh, when I was first on the board and I visited U Pass. As, uh, one of the libraries that I adopted, one of the things that I was told is we also serve there at U Pass. As people go up to Cripple Creek or other places, they, we do the interlibrary loan. So they pick up a lot of materials for their, uh, use. So I think we also serve as a conduit out in that. Uh, area. Uh, and this, and I agree Debbie about the priorities. That's why I said that earlier. That there needs to be a time when there is, you look at the facilities master plan and you make decisions and. If I'm not mistaken and Teona and Denise can, uh, correct me if I'm wrong, but John Weiss and, uh. Um, Dave Williams. Wayne Williams, I'm sorry. Wayne Williams, uh, both. Encouraged us to consider bringing forth and having those discussions. So that would be one of the things that I would say needs to be, uh, worked on, take time to do. Set the real priorities and then move forward. And I would, uh, encourage the board to do that. Uh, prior to making any final decisions at this time. Uh, I, I am one of those that I do think we should have conversations. We have a lot of questions that weren't answered. Uh, that you might, uh. Receive answers and it may not be something that we want to do once we get the answer. So, uh, there's a lot of questions, uh. I, but I don't. I believe that, uh, speaking with Teona, uh, this is not a. A decision to purchase, it's just a decision to, uh, have conversations about the building and. Uh, seeing where we're at. And then later on, that decision may be made, yay or nay. So, uh. That's my piece, but, uh, I now can entertain anyone that. Uh, if there aren't any other comments, I can entertain a motion for them to move forward in conversations.
May I, just before we could say, um. I just wanted also to remind all of us that last time, that's what the board wanted us to go and collect more information. So that's what we did. For us to actually collect more information. We cannot do that without your authorization. That's, that's why the information we have. We wanted to present it to you and then. There's, you know. We did not want just to collect all this information and keep it to ourselves. So that's then, that's, that's why we're here and that's why. Uh, we presented that as well. So, um, and if we consider implementing the hybrid staffing. Um, in current location, and I think that would be advisable for us to be able to provide services to. Uh, citizens, uh, because we cannot staff that over, over seven days. Um, we would be to invest in our, in this building about roughly seventy thousand dollars to make it happen. So that's why, also, uh, just for you to consider. Because currently how the doors are and ADA, uh, we would not be able to do so.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Uh, anyone else? I thought maybe somebody was going to speak. Um.
So that's terrible. Hey, Heather, do, what did you say about the lease, um, expiring? Did you say twenty thirty-four?
Then, yes, took so hard that we, it looks like we plunged into a new lease of, as in twenty twenty-four and ten years of this then.
Okay.
You know, we, it ramps up fifty cents, seventy-five cents, dollars per foot, holds at a dollar per foot. And now we would be looking to have that conversation. I don't know if it's right for, I don't know.
Thanks.
Okay, any? Anyone want to entertain a motion or we're not in that? We don't feel like that would be something we want to do at this time.
So, uh, I'll go ahead and motion. Um, I think in order to get more information, we need to authorize the administration to do that. Uh, I think many of Scott's questions are valid, but I think some of that can come out through the discussion and negotiation process. And we can see if it's something that actually makes sense for the district at a future time, but we, we won't know, we won't get there until we actually. Have those conversations. So. I move that the Pike Street Library District Board of Trustees authorize the administration to open discussion with the Cascade Fire Protection District regarding the possible purchase of the U Pass building as presented.
No, second. Okay, I have a, in a second. Anybody else have any comments before we go for a vote? Hearing none, uh, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor of us entering into conversations, uh, about U Pass, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those, uh, not against the. The motion, signify by saying same side.
Alright.
Okay, Scott?
I'm gonna abstain.
And we have an extension. So we have one extension one day and the rest of us. So it looks like the motion passes. So the, uh, we authorize the administration to go forward and just ask questions. And I think all of Scott's questions were very valid. Thank you for thinking of those and we'll move forward. Who knows what will happen next? Thank you. Okay, at this moment, we have the supplemental budget adjustment, Randy.
Oh, yeah, I would.
Hello, Dan.
So the supplemental budget adjustment in front of you is four point four. Um. And it's a combination of all three of our, um, funds, general fund, capital fund and the self-insurance fund. I'm not requesting any, uh, adjustments on the self-insurance fund. The capital fund, uh. Requesting, uh, an increase of two hundred thousand dollars. Uh. Sixty thousand dollars for cash register upgrade across the district. Uh, but cash registers that we've had, I don't know if that all on. Uh, they don't talk to anything. They are totally independent to themselves. Uh, we have. Yeah, uh. Double paper, um. Register receipts that run off and they have to send that over to the finance department and we have to hunt through those. Yellow receipts sometimes and they chop us up and do reconcile, so. Uh, the whole process is. And so, um, these registers would actually, um. Uh, integrate with. Uh integrate with our current um M R E R P system. And so as transactions were being done on each register, it would uh. Send those transactions directly into our general ledger and we would see what was going on on every register. As transactions were going on, going into our um general ledger, which we don't have that now. Um. So um anyway, we we started exploring this last. Middle of last year and just kept getting more information. We decided that. Probably something that would uh. Save time for staff in the different locations and also for finance. Reconciling and. Keeping up with all the cash that comes to the registers. We would still continue to move the money the way we are right now from location to location goes into a. Safe that's located in most of the branches and we are also working on getting a safe of every location. Uh, but that process would still stay in place. So monies that come out of those registered would go into a log save and then our security people come by. Um, what about every two weeks? Yep. And uh hold a hold a cash and bring it over to finance and go through a process there to offload it. And we that deposit into the bank. Uh, the next one that that we uh. Found that we probably need to do sooner than later is the replacement of the cowhand roof. It is currently leaking. And I think we've probably done some uh stopgaps on it, but uh. It it needs to be replaced. And then as part of the um total remodel on uh uh Penrose, uh we are putting in a computer lab. That will uh. Include laptops that can be um charged up and pulled out, checked out. So I think that process will be a little easier than what we've been doing lately, but that. That's just a continuation of that process of bringing that um that location into um. More of a. I guess twenty-first century.
Yeah.
Um, so I did want to talk about those before I assist of the general ledger. Um, as you can see, the revenue, it's got um. Several adjustments, not many of them are real huge. Uh, the one that we've talked about before is the tax revenue that we received at the uh. April distribution of funds to the district. And. That is, those are our funds per the um. Prescribed handling through the Senate bills that were passed last year. Uh, what I don't know at this point is, and I won't know this until probably next year when I get done with the Tabor calculations. If that will push us over our um. Our overall limit for revenue for the year. And of course, once once that was figured out, we either would. Keep it or pay back to the taxpayers, whatever goes over that limit. And I can't calculate that limit till we close this year, get an actual number. And so there's a whole process behind that. So those funds, while I have to bring them into revenue because we did receive them and I have to do something with them. Uh, as part of our um. Process of keeping those separate from our spendable uh unassigned funds, I would move those over to reserve. Fund balance. That entire amount would be locked up similar to what we do with uh. Uh. Tabor emergency funds. Uh, it was, it's basically restricted um. Not necessarily by law. Well, it is because I. I have to kind of hold it off to the side until I figure out who the money belongs to. So it would come out of unassigned and be moved over to. Um, so. That restricted uh form of fund balance. Uh, the next item, which we've all been watching this go throughout last year and even the year before. Is uh an increase in the budget for uh investment income that came off more long-term investment accounts. Uh, last year, I believe that adjustment was like one point five million. This year is one million. So. Again, I don't have a crystal ball. I don't know what this next year is going to look like, but it it did slow down some and it and our. Ending balance actually increased. Um, so. Anyway, that's that's just an adjustment that may. May go on for a few years. I don't think it's gonna, I think it's gonna come down as we go on. I don't think. This next one will be a billion dollars. I think it'll be less than that. I just don't know what it'll be. The next section uh of grants and designated funds, uh the process I go through to figure that out is um. Kim and I actually spent quite a bit of time on on this going through um. You know, things that we had known for quite a while, like the digital equity grant uh. We actually ended up turning that back in because um. Hmm. We didn't uh, if I remember right. Yes.
Having been talking.
Yeah, yeah.
We turned that back in mostly because we couldn't meet the requirements. It actually in the in the technical language of it, once. Um, I reviewed it, it required. That we would have to. Track, we would have to confirm from the patron who was checking it out that they were using it either for educational or workforce reasons. And then we would have to track that checkout and every track checkout with every laptop used. For ten years and and we don't track patron information like that and. We didn't have a the capacity. Or um, yeah, so that is, that is the reason we turned that back up.
Wow.
So um that was, that was. Too much to go over that. So uh we decided um to go ahead and turn that back into the city. Um. Most of the of the recipes are for ongoing. Projects and um work that we're doing Lena uh that. That's grand dollars that have been coming in from Fuel Foundation. That's a fantastic um. Initiative there that we've done for that, the children that have uh.
Our literacy.
Yeah.
Our families.
Yes. Um. So there's, it's had a great impact on on the community, the parents that have participated in that um comments that I've got back, uh love that program. And so. That's one that we don't always know what the amount's gonna be or whatever. So that's why we don't necessarily put it in the budget, but we've ended up adjusting several times. Summer reading, we get help from uh uh Children's Hospital as a sponsorship. So that one's been very nice. Uh, we. We belong to the Consortium of Southern Colorado um. Which is media production and stuff like that. So again, we we get a a piece of the money that they give out and uh. Probably seen some of the films that um uh communications and have produced their. High quality and so that's that's a nice brand. Uh Kobe Trust um. That has been there forever and that and that number is never really gonna be here. It depends on how they're. How the investment they got set up, does if they send us off X number of dollars. So we have to kind of wait until that happens before we know what to do. Uh, we all know Friends has uh been fantastic in twenty-four. I think, you know, I I think based on the enthusiasm that I hear out of. Rita and that whole group will continue to see funds coming in on that. But. That was a nice number to be able to bump our budget up by fifty-eight thousand dollars. But Shivers Fund, um I don't know if any of you are familiar with that. But Peggy Shivers, I mean, I know we all know who Peggy Shivers is. But uh she is very committed to to having that fund here. We're basically her financial custodian. And so we work very closely with her and so she'll raise funds, she'll uh, you know, different things and. And it's wholly funded by what she raises. So that's just part of the money that she gives us annually and it's fifty thousand dollars last year. Um. Can. Aid foundation that was basically for recycling and stuff like that. And and I think. We didn't. Yeah, okay. Um, that was. More something was handled through facilities. I I don't know exactly why we didn't get that grant, but uh I had to take it out because we did. Um. So on the revenue side, um. That saw a total adjustment of three million seventy-seven of which. Two million eighty-six of that's gonna come out and get locked up in a in a restricted fund balance. On the expenditure side, um. You can see we had quite a few adjustments. Before I got down to the adjusted number as of um before this meeting, thirty-seven million dollars in expenditures. Um. Library materials and under encumbrances, that's something we uh have to assign every year. It's just based on open POs, what hasn't been closed and. And it got received for the year and all that. Uh, so that's just a normal ongoing um roll back into the the current year for past from the last year. And then all of the costs associated with the grants that were uh either accepted or turned back. Uh, transfer out, of course, the the two hundred thousand dollars amount asking for our capital has to come out of the general fund. So that's moving that over. And then our vacancy pool um savings adjustment I've talked about. Uh for months now. Um, I believe the ending number will end up being an additional one million eight seventy-three. And so that brings us down to a total of adjustment taking. A million one eighty-four off from our previous expenditures. And brings us down to thirty-six million off of thirty-seven. Uh, the capital, of course, goes up two hundred thousand and like I. Mentioned earlier, the self insurance fund saw no impacts. And so um this resolution is actually asking because it's um the part of the budget that you approve is the bill levy and appropriation. And so that. Basically, as you read. Through the resolution, it it basically puts into work that. Um. Pretty much anyone would understand without having to study the schedule of the activities going on these decreases. And and subsequently what uh happened with the appropriation. Anybody have any questions?
I'm just assuming that. When you refer to a men attachment A. You're referring to the two pages you just covered.
Yes.
Do we have to read the resolution? We can. Can we say as presented? We can't. Okay, good. It depends from you. Uh. Does any, if there aren't any questions or comments, can we go ahead and entertain a motion for? The resolution for the twenty twenty-four supplemental budget adjustments?
I'm going to give the Pike Street Library District Board of Trustees a twenty twenty-four supplemental budget adjustment as presented.
Second.
Okay, there's a first and a second. Any other uh anyone have any comments that they want to make before we vote? Hearing none, we'll go for the vote. All those in favor of the resolution signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone oppose? No one's opposed to the resolution package. Hmm. Okay. Um, oh, we're gonna talk about the border trustees um. And uh, uh, I guess.
Conflict of interest.
Conflict of interest. We're gonna have that discussion before we go to officer appointment or. So we, what you're saying, Scott, is our. Our commitment is to the trustee conflict. And all the others don't belong with us. And then I heard someone else say that. The conflict of interest for the board of trustees and the leadership belong with us because. Teona belongs to us. Oh, my. Uh, I heard that as well, but the foundation and uh friends would be out. So what do we want to do? That is the question. Do we wanna? We know the board of trustees stays with us. That's the one we do know. What do we want to do about the leadership? The leadership team, what do we, what should we do about that?
Alright, so looking at this document yet again, uh. The board trustees, if they have any issues or responsibility questions, then they direct their questions to the president. Um. Whereas the leadership team directs their questions to the CEO. So again, I'm still thinking that that leadership team. Their conflict of interest needs to fall into the HR responsibility. Uh. And again, the board trustees. Conflict of interest remains with us.
Any other thoughts?
Would it be beneficial to have the governance committee take a look at how to split that out?
It might be, yeah.
Back at the beginning of the meeting?
Yes, since there isn't any uh deadline on that, right? On our, uh, what you said earlier on by last week.
I'd rather it get done sooner rather than later.
Yeah. Well, hopefully in February, you can make a decision on where it goes.
Why don't we just pull the others, we'll relegate the leadership one to the governance committee for determination and then we can vote on the board of trustees this evening.
That sounds good.
I'm fine with that.
Okay, so can I have someone make a motion regarding that? We can vote on it?
I make a motion to approve the board of trustees conflict ventures forum and. Pass the leadership forum to the governance committee and remove. The foundation and the friends. Conflict of interest forms from the motion.
Can I hear a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a first and a second. Now, uh, anybody have any other comments on this? If not, we'll go for the vote. Angela, you have a comment?
Oh, no.
Okay, because you moved up.
I know, I will.
Uh, okay, so the. So what we're doing is we're gonna vote on the board of trustees that we vote on our own and we're gonna move the leadership team to governance so that they can review it. And we're pulling out foundation and friends. Correct? That's a motion. So all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye. Uh. Anyone opposed? Hearing none, that motion passes. So whoever is in charge of governance, that might be your first duty. To review that. Okay, the next item on the agenda is actually um. Looking at our officer appointments or voting for those officers tonight. And I think governance is in charge of that. So Julie, if you're up.
Um, so governance nominated Julie Smyth as board president, Aaron Salt as vice president and Scott Taylor as board secretary treasurer.
And who was vice, Jeff?
Uh, Aaron Salt.
Aaron, oh, okay. There we go. And Scott's gonna be our secretary? Right, okay. Uh, so this is our slate of officers that has been presented, correct?
Uh, yes, so I believe there's still opportunity for additional nominations, but um.
Okay, is anyone uh willing to nominate someone else for either president, vice president or secretary treasurer? Anyone interested in nominating anyone for those positions? Okay, and I think you have to say it three times. Anyone interested in, this is the third time. Uh, nominating any other person for either president, vice president or secretary treasurer? Hearing none. Uh. Do we accept the slate of officers as presented? Do we have to vote on that?
Yes, there has to be a motion.
Okay, can I have a motion?
Yes, you know.
Oh.
Why?
If it's by affirmation.
Oh, I guess. Yeah, you're right. We did do that last year.
So. So congratulations, Julie, Aaron and Scott. Okay. Now we uh, we also have committee chair appointments.
Yes, and I believe based off of what we did last year, that was a discussion rather than a decision.
Right. So uh, do we have anyone that is going, do you have any appointments for that or is that gonna be taken off? And done somewhere else out of this meeting?
I think last time we had some discussion and then we made the final decision.
Okay.
But that was announced later. Um.
Okay, uh, so. The governance committee, I know this is the man that always has run the governance well, has helped us and I immensely thank you, Scott. Because you gave me a lot of good information. Uh, and. And I immensely thank you, Scott, cuz you gave me a lot of good information. Uh, and governance really keeps track with the. Oh, much of what we do, the bylaws, we do that, our uh, conflict of interest, uh. What else do we do? We, well, we uh, have the application process for new openings. Tell me you have that list, I bet. Um, is there something else? Like, I think we're looking at different things through policy.
Yeah, governance focuses on um, just policy, I like uh, board policy and um. You know, government like. Different rules and implementation, all those sorts of things, um. Procedures, things like that. Internal affairs deals with uh, more internal library policies and decisions that need to be made and public affairs deals with um. Interaction with the public and anything related to typically um. About measures, things like that, so.
Right, um, and that's gonna be a busy one in the future, for sure.
Yes, I know Debbie's been wonderful at that in the past year.
Uh, so do we have a, if we're just gonna have this decision item here, but if it's just a discussion.
Um, I I wanted to to also point out that the board appoints the liaisons to the foundation board. Uh, who are also voting board members of that board, so. Um, this year it was me and Scott and so um. Those positions need to get built too.
Is it only the liaisons to the foundation, but is there also a liaison to the friends?
I don't believe so.
It's just foundation because they're voting members of the board.
Okay, so do we wanna do this now?
Um, I think we.
Do we, we have to, okay.
According to the bylaws.
Okay.
Standing committees are those that are needed on an ongoing basis, even though the president, board of trustees. Shall include governance by law. The board president will make committee appointments annually at the board's January. Organizational meeting and after selection of the board's officers. Now. This is where we get into processes. Since we've already made the officers. Julie, you would be responsible for assigning the committees.
Okay.
Since you are now the new president.
Okay. Thank you.
Well, then I would love to ask Debbie if you would consider uh, heading public affairs again this year.
I would love to.
Do that so well. Um, we typically don't have officers also service committee heads, so I'll also ask Erin if you'd be willing to take. Internal affairs and Angela, if you'd be willing to oversee governance. And then um, is there, I I don't think we've discussed uh, foundation, is there interest by, I know particularly, I know Debbie served on that. Uh, sorry, not governance, um. Foundation, I know you served uh, last year. Are you interested in continuing this year?
When are the meetings in the time commitment?
So the time commitment, well, tomorrow morning is the next foundation meeting. It is at eight AM, so it is a morning meeting.
Okay.
Um, so and that is monthly.
Mm-hmm.
And we alternate, yeah, we alternate in person, online, in person, online, and they're monthly.
I I just always wanted to know more about the foundation, then their meeting tomorrow morning at eight o'clock. But but if somebody else wants to, I do have quite a packed. Busy time with what I'm doing currently.
The foundation.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Just everyone knows the foundation has gone through uh, a lot of strategic planning and organizational stuff, which I think will finish. Most of it tomorrow. There are gonna be a lot of new board members and the emphasis is going to be on fundraising. So um, if if you wanna raise some money, here's your big chance.
So if anyone's excited about it, I'd love to give them an opportunity to jump in.
So if Angela wants to do it.
Raise some money? Great, I I can't come tomorrow, is it?
No, it's okay, it's okay, yeah.
You can't after that.
Just just wanted to clarify, it's Debbie and Angela then?
Looks like they're feeling Angela, yes.
Debbie and Angela. Well, I think we we tweeted that. And any, anyone have any comment? Is there anything else we need to be? Yeah, Julie's gonna close.
Okay, well, if there's no further discussion this meeting, is there any further discussion on any of them?
Yes.
Yes, okay.
Uh, we did, we did the chairs.
Yes.
But when will we know who is our our co-person on that committee?
Uh, I think we can announce that.
Okay.
Yeah.
Very good.
Right, well then if no further discussion. We will adjourn at seven seventeen.